I would like to call to order the July 29th, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. We have a big crowd tonight. First up on our agenda is approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies, I think, of four different minutes before you. Do I hear any corrections or a motion to approve?
I may for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that the minutes be approved as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to the approval of the agenda, which you also have before you.
Which Chairman are we going to have our invocation?
Yes, sir. We're going to that will be the next item.
Okay. You got that a lot.
Yes, sir. I was testing to see if you were paying attention or not. So did I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Sir, move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion is approved, and we will now stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are very pleased to have with us tonight Pastor Doug Falls from the Stonebridge Church Community for our invocation. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for Cabarrus County. As we look around, we see signs of your goodness everywhere. Certainly, we live in one of the more safe and prosperous corners of the world. However, nevertheless, there are still problems to be solved and opportunities to be taken advantage of, and to that end, we thank you for the commissioners before us. We pray your goodness in their lives individually, that your favor would be upon them, but we also ask that you'd be with them, that they would govern wisely and fairly and justly, and that you'd be with them in general as they do that, and particularly tonight. And so we look forward to how you're going to work. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Falls. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Okay, we move now to recognitions and presentations, and first up are several recognitions from boards and committees. And first, I would call on David Thrift to recognize Mary Stewart.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize one of our members of the Board of Equalization and Review. I would like to thank Mary Elizabeth Stewart, who has decided not to seek reappointment after her latest term ended June 30th. Ms. Stewart was first appointed to the board in July of 2005. She then served through four reappointments totaling 14 years of service, multiple terms of which she sat as either the chair or the vice chair of that board. For those who may be unfamiliar, the Board of VNR is essentially an oversight board for the tax administration. It is the local level for formal property tax appeals and disputes. So Ms. Stewart's legal background and expertise positioned her as an ideal member for that board, protecting the interests of the county while providing an extremely high level of service to the citizens of Cabarrus, assuring equity and fairness of tax assessments. Her leadership, wisdom, expertise, and character will be missed on the Board of VNR. So once again, just a thank you to Mary Elizabeth Stewart for her service. She was unable to be here tonight, but I will present that certificate to her.
Great. Thank you, David. I think Lauren has the certificate over there for you. And I do not see Donna Carpenter or a representative from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but they wanted to offer recognition to Vinay Patel, who has served on the Tourism Authority for nine years, so that might be one we bring up at a later meeting. And at this time, I'm happy to welcome Megan Bumgarner to the front to recognize Jane Coffin.
My name is Megan Bumgarner, and I am the Chair of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council here in Cabarrus County. The JCPC relies on the dedication of volunteers to advocate for and provide services for the juveniles in Cabarrus County. We meet at 7:30 in the morning, and most people in the community don't even know that we exist, but we take our positions very seriously, and we work extremely hard to provide a well-rounded and comprehensive team of services that will benefit children and families within our community. One of those individuals who works so diligently is Jane Coffin. The JCPC has been extremely fortunate to have Jane on our team for so long she can't even remember how long she's been on the council. She worked with the Department of Social Services, and her experiences and expertise were invaluable to the council when it came to making important decisions, so much so that Jane has sat at the head of the table longer than any JCPC chair. She could always be trusted to give us wise and reasoned advice as we discuss the difficult task of saving our juveniles from an overworked and underfunded system. We are so happy for her retirement, but she is irreplaceable on the council, and she will be greatly missed. It is my honor and my pleasure to introduce Jane Coffin to this board, and I sincerely thank her for her service to the people of Cabarrus County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. It has been my pleasure to serve with you on that Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and you will truly be missed. Okay, and Megan has a certificate for you, and the next item on our agenda is Digital County Survey, first place recognition, and Debbie Brownland's going to tell us about that.
Certainly am. I am delighted to announce that Cabarrus County ranked first in the 2019 Digital County Survey presented by the Center for Digitals Government and the National Association of Counties. This is a very prestigious recognition of technology innovation, transformative leadership that drives better citizen services, boosts transparency, and maximizes efficiency. It is my honor to be here tonight to recognize and thank our IT staff for their dedication and innovation work. The team works every day with all the county departments, other jurisdictions, businesses, and residents to improve and transform the delivery of government services. I invite each team member to stand and join me at the podium as I call out their names. I really wanted to give a little bio of each person, but we have such a fascinating crew, we would be here all night. So after I introduce everyone, I will give a short profile of the IT department that demonstrates how interesting they really are. I will, however, start with one short bio of our CIO, Todd Shanley, and he's going to bring up our trophy. He had to pry it from my hands. I mean, the fingerprints all over in our mine. I want to give you a bio of Todd to highlight the depth of knowledge and the service dedication we have in the IT department. Todd, our Chief Information Officer, after serving in the U.S. Army, he started to work here as a GIS intern while working on his undergraduate degree at UNCC. Since then, he has obtained a multitude of technical certifications, his master's in information technology from UNCC, and several certifications from the School of Government, including county administration and government chief information officer. Jason Reese, our deputy CIO, couldn't be here tonight. He's on vacation coaching his son's baseball team in an out-of-state tournament. Several other team members could not be here tonight due to planned vacations and other obligations. But Jason Cook is here, and he is our technical administrator. He's our technical architecture supervisor in charge of software and hardware infrastructure. His team consists of Andrew Dexter, Corey Hendricks, and Eric Gervathan. Monica Beja, our support desk, help desk team supervisor, unfortunately could not be here this evening, but she is super proud of her team, which is Jackson McWaters, James Hints, Laura Hatley, and Trey Sturgill. Ryan Ward supervises the network team, which includes Jason Varner, Josh Holder, and Kevin Thomas. Jack Dodd, formerly a member of the network team, was recently promoted to our cybersecurity administrator. Joe Batinelli, the GIS and analytics team of Marcy Jones, Landon Patterson, Brittany Kaiser, and Mark McIntyre. And last but not least, Matt Saunders supervises our enterprise business systems team of Darren Caldwell, Maurice Spain, and Michelle Willie. The IT department currently has four vacancies. We're looking for a SQL database administrator, a Windows Office 365 system administrator, a help desk technician, and a new business analyst position to help with our Excel and land management permitting and inspection software. Will soon be advertised, so if anyone's listening and would like to apply to join this amazing team, apply at cabarruscounty.us/employment. And now the team profile. Our staff range in age from 23 to 60 years young, with a median age of 35, which is pretty young for a department and county government right now. We have 10 employees with 10 or more years of service to the county. We have 14 with five or less, and that includes six new hires in the last year. We have five veterans, three from the U.S. Army, one Marine, and one Coast Guard. We were blessed with six babies in the last year. I think you heard one a little earlier. The new babies deserve family leave time, and this gave the team an opportunity to demonstrate how they can pull together and help each other have a good work-life balance. The team includes athletes and gamers, a storm chaser and a foster mom, singers and musicians, including one bagpipe player, a former police officer, and a trained marine biologist, mission workers, house renovators, a sign language signer, a German-born who speaks a little German, and a U.S.-born who speaks fluent Spanish. We have master's degrees, recent college graduates, and several currently working on their undergraduate degrees, an amateur astronomer and auto enthusiast, world travelers and inquisitive innovators. Here is a group of unique individuals with different areas of interest and expertise that come together as a cohesive team to address problems and create solutions that help Cabarrus County thrive. While this award is an amazing accomplishment for the IT team, it belongs to the entire county. Innovation requires change, and this achievement represents changes in all the county departments that could not be accomplished without the hard work of all the county employees, the leadership of county management, and the support of the county Board of Commissioners. I am privileged to work with you all, and I excitedly look forward to what our culture of innovation will generate next. Thank you for your part in helping to make us number one.
Thank you so much, and thank you for what all of you do. It has been my great honor to accept these awards for, on behalf of you guys, at our national convention several years in a row, and I think Commissioner Kiger and I were talking with some of the other competitors last year and said, "Next year, we'll be number one." And we surely were, due to all of your hard work. And, you know, for, these are the people that are kind of like us behind the curtain. All these things that we do all the time work correctly, and we never see them, we never talk to them that much, unless we have a problem, but they make everything run smoothly, and certainly it's something for every citizen in Cabarrus County to be proud of what you do and what you have accomplished. And we are very, very much indebted to you, and congratulations to all of you. So well-deserved honor.
Thank you very much.
And it gives us a lot of bragging rights with our other surrounding counties as well, so we enjoy that also. Hmm? Right. I don't think you need to worry. Yeah. Next item on our agenda is a proclamation honoring the memory and achievements of Leanne Powell. Leanne, most of you have heard, was a very involved person in our community. Her memorial service was this past Saturday. I was honored to be able to attend that, and so I wanted to read this proposed proclamation. A proclamation in tribute and honor of Leanne Powell. Whereas Leanne Powell was born June 30th, 1968, a native of Concord, North Carolina, and whereas she was involved in politics at many levels, she was a campaign manager for Congressman Hefner. She worked in the White House Women's Office in the Clinton administration before moving to work for political appointee Jill Long Thompson, who was the undersecretary of agriculture. After that, she advised many political candidates over the years, and whereas she was the co-founder, president, and chief executive officer of Cabarrus County's own Southern Grace Distilleries, Whiskey Prison, and whereas she was committed to supporting locally-owned small businesses and the workforce of Cabarrus County, and whereas she was passionate about continuing the legacy of older properties and revitalizing her community, and whereas Governor Roy Cooper presented her with the Order of the Longleaf Pine for her dedicated years of service. Whereas Leanne Powell died on July 20th, 2019, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby pays tribute to Leanne Powell, recognizing her outstanding life of service to Cabarrus County and its citizens, and extends deepest sympathies to the family. Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Sir, move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and our thoughts and prayers are certainly with Leanne's family, and we will forever be indebted to her for all she contributed to Cabarrus County. At our work session earlier this month, I had made some comments and mentioned the passing of Concord City Councilman Sam Leader. And we have a senatorial statement that I received from Senator Newton that I wanted to share with all of you, and it's entitled, "A Senatorial Statement Honoring Samuel Mayor Leader, Member of the Concord City Council." Whereas Samuel Mayor Leader grew up in Whiteville, North Carolina, and graduated from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill in 1991, receiving a bachelor's degree in business administration and a master's degree in accounting, and whereas Samuel moved to the city of Concord where he worked and lived with his family, and whereas Samuel gave freely of his time and energy to virtually all aspects of his community, including serving as a member of the Concord City Council, member and past president of the Concord Rotary Club, member and former chairman of the Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce, and member of the Uaree Bank Executive Board, treasurer of the Academic Learning Center, treasurer of the Ella Ford Foundation, member of the Central North Carolina Boy Scouts Council, member of the Carolina International School, and a supporter of Concord High Athletics. Whereas Sam was a member of Temple Ora Alum and Temple Israel of Salisbury, and whereas Sam died on June 30th, 2019, leaving his wife Shannon and their two sons, Matthew and Bennett, now therefore Samuel Mayor Leader deserves to be honored for the service he rendered to his community as a member of numerous boards and as a member of the Concord City Council. In witness thereof, the undersigned certifies that the foregoing statement was read in the Senate and placed upon the Journal on the 23rd day of July 2019, submitted by Senator Paul Newton and signed by Senate Principal Clerk Sarah Holland. And we very much appreciate Senator Newton making this tribute to Sam Leader. These are two individuals that have a very positive and lasting impact on our community, and they will both be very missed. And next, we move now to informal public comments. I have one yellow card that's been turned in. If you would come to the podium and speak into the microphone and state your name and address, and this card is from Tanya Barbie.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Barbie. You need my address still?
Please.
It's 18 Barbie Road, Concord, North Carolina, 28027. We're here this evening to ask Cabarrus County to take a look at our current animal ordinance in regards to stray animals and to consider making small revisions that would strengthen the safeguards for our pets in the community in the event that they become lost. Currently, our ordinance does not specifically clarify what to do if a private citizen were to find a domestic animal not belonging to them. Pets are considered property in North Carolina, and your average citizen does not know this. You see, the animal rescue community sees cases weekly where property laws don't always protect the animals or the pet owner's rights. We see private residents finding stray animals and make the decision based on their own judgment that the rightful owner doesn't deserve to be reunited with their pet. In other cases, a private citizen doesn't even know what to do with a stray animal and will attempt to keep, rehome, or even sell the animal without looking for the owner. Our current animal ordinance mimics the North Carolina General Statute, which only applies to government-run agencies like animal control facilities. The specific ordinance that we would like Cabarrus County to adopt would hold private residents to the same standards and procedures that our animal control department follows. For example, if animal control picks up a stray animal or a stray animal is brought to the shelter, the shelter policy is to hold the animals for 72 hours, that excludes weekends, and attempt to find the owner. They'll use social media outlets like Facebook, the county website, to post the animal's pictures, and that's where owners can look for their animals. At this time, it is not clear that a private citizen must attempt to locate an owner, and they must hold the animal for 72 hours. We feel that private residents should follow the same standards and procedures that the animal shelter does, so that every owner who unintentionally loses a pet will have a fair chance at being reunited with their pet. The ordinance should state that any found cats or dogs must either be turned into animal control or a report made to animal control within 24 hours of finding the animal, and then the animal can be held privately for a minimum of 72 hours. The ordinance also states, the current ordinance states, that stray animals are to be impounded by animal control, but our shelter couldn't possibly house the amount of stray animals that are, that pop up daily. Surrounding counties like Charlotte Mecklenburg, Iredell, Rowan County, and Davidson are just a few of the local counties whom have adopted the similar verbiage for their ordinance. And I have, I brought some copies for you guys.
Sure. If you want to give those to the clerk, you can pass them out.
Okay. So basically, what we're asking for is that private residents have to go through the same procedure that the shelter does. This way, every animal is treated fairly, because you don't have proof of ownership if you don't take your animal to the vet, or they don't get, you know, you don't get them microchipped. And we do have a community that doesn't do that, so we want to make sure that every animal is...
Okay. Thank you very much.
You...
If you'll pass that information along to the clerk.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that was the only card that we had tonight, so we move now to our consent agenda, and of course, you all have a list of those items in front of you, which are items that we have previously discussed at our work session earlier this month. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Sir, move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to new business. First item on our new business was a public hearing for an economic development investment. That hearing has been postponed to our August 19th meeting, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for an economic development investment for Project Wavy for 6:30 PM on August the 19th.
I approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We move now to item two, which is a fund balance appropriation, and I will turn the floor over to the county manager for this item.
Ms. Farrington's going to, Ms. Farrington's going to start off, and I will finish it up.
Okay.
And each year, the county assigns a portion of their fund balance or their savings account to keep on hand for extraordinary circumstances. Tonight, we are requesting a transfer of $1,653,082.60 from the general fund to the 2017 Limited Obligation Capital Projects Fund, along with permission to prepare a budget amendment and associated project ordinance. This capital project fund accounts for the construction of the West Cabarrus High School.
Just to follow up what Ms. Farrington said, we are requesting this, the use of the fund balance to be transferred into this account, just for clarification. It is not because the school has had overruns and/or the cost of the school has gone up. There were some issues that we had taken place several months ago that I wanted to talk to you about and also advise the public as well. Cabarrus County was, on December 21st, Cabarrus County was targeted as a business account compromise. The social engineering scam diverted $2,504,601. That was the vendor payment that was going to this school. And of that 2.5 million, $1,728.60 is still missing. On that date, December 21st, the county intended to send the money to Roanoke, Virginia-based Branch and Associates, Inc., which serves as the general contractor for the West Cabarrus High School, the newest high school that is under construction and just about to be built and hopefully opened in a few weeks on Weddington Road. The county was not hacked. It was not a cyber security. This is a case of a spoofed identity in which someone posed as a vendor, provided seemingly valid documentation, and signed approvals. In recent years, the FBI has seen a steep increase in the amount and sophistication of socially engineered businesses' email account compromise scams. The FBI's 2018 Internet Crime Control Report indicates the agency received 20,373 complaints with adjusted losses of $1.2 billion last year. We are now at the point in the investigation where we can share the information on the processes taken to secure and defend our resources. In response to this situation, the county contacted authorities immediately, who opened an investigation, followed the recommendation and protocols of our financial institutions, hired a top accounts payable consultant who had demonstrated extensive knowledge about the topic and understanding of the effective business practices. We examined the processes and corrected vulnerabilities, a process that we will need to continue to refine as cyber crimes become more sophisticated. Communicated early and often with Branch and Associates. Throughout the situation, they stayed focused on the building of West Cabarrus High School and without any interruption... and without any interruption to their schedule. We appreciate their competences in our processes and also their commitment to making it right. Despite our best efforts, we were only able to recover $776,518.40. Tonight, we asked the commissioners to restore the funding to the construction project by approving the transfer of $1,653,082.60 to the capital funds project. The funds for the transfer will come from a portion of the county's assigned fund balance that is set aside for extraordinary circumstances as described by Ms. Farrington. Cabarrus County and our employees understand that it is our duty to protect the assets of the county. We do not take this responsibility lightly. We have invested in a total overhaul of our AP processes, which limits our vulnerabilities. It also sets our finance departments up for success in the future. It is important to the community, it is important the community know our finance staff is a incredible team of dedicated and trustworthy employees who were victimized by a scam. They were accountable for their actions, responded with urgency, and played a critical role in assisting law enforcement in establishing our new processes. We regret that this has occurred. Our Sheriff's Department, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the Bank of America, and SunTrust Bank, and our employees have done an excellent job of investigating this crime, returning a portion of the stolen funds back to the county. The residents and taxpayers of Cabarrus County should and can expect the county government to be responsible stewards of your tax dollars. We have all learned from this experience, and we continue to do everything we can to prevent this from happening again. For those watching, for more information included, it is complete description of the situation and the timeline of events are all available to the public on our website at www.cabarriscounty.us. Mr. Chairman, with that brief background, I do recommend or hope that you can, that the board will see fit to approve this budget amendment.
Thank you for that explanation. Obviously, this is something that the Board of Commissioners has been aware of for quite some time. I think that a logical question that folks might ask is, if this occurred in December, why are we now addressing it this much later? And I think the correct answer to that question is the fact that it was an ongoing investigation with the Sheriff's Department as well as the FBI, and so we were instructed to keep that confidential as to not interfere with that investigation. So, at this time, and the correct amount for this budget amendment is the $1,728,082.60. That, I don't think that's right.
I think it's different because you have to subtract out the insurance.
Exactly, yeah.
So... It's 1.6, $1,653,082.60.
Right, and 60 cents. I see that now in this front page. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve an appropriation of fund balance in the amount of $1,653,082.60, and direct the Finance Director to prepare the associated budget amendment and project ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? And I made some comments. I welcome any of you to add to that if you wish or not.
Was the Secret Service part of that investigation as well? Seems like, is there, I don't know, the layers of jurisdiction, but for some reason, I'm thinking cash generates an extra level. Not that that's relevant, but other than the magnitude of who looked into this is, to me, relevant for the public to know.
I think it's safe to say that every avenue was explored and exhausted in this process. Any other discussion?
I just want to make a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. That is, nobody ever expects something like this to happen, but it just happens to be part of our society today with the technology and advancement of different scams and all of that stuff that goes on these days. And I'm just glad that the county, in the planning part, in the budgetary process, sets aside funds in the event of unusual circumstances. Ms. Farrington said, "We set aside monies for things like this," because I would imagine that there's other counties that have incidents like this, but yet they don't have the funds. And see, with this, we'll be able to make the payment to the contractor for the school so the school can keep, can open up. But with a lot of mixed emotions too during this time, I have to admit, because we couldn't really figure out who was responsible. There were so many different people involved, but it's not our job to do that. That's the people's job that do the, you know, the investigations and all. But it's something that, you know, we've got to make it right, and this is the only way to do it. And so, that's all that I have to say about it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, if there is none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to reports. And so, at this time, we'll receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various other boards and committees. Anybody have a report tonight? Commissioner Honeycutt, we can usually depend on you and the senior group. Okay, great.
Time to mess us up.
Yeah, we are a little bit off schedule this month. This is not our normal meeting time. Okay, are there other general comments by board members before we close tonight? Okay, hearing none. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 3 and 4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you all for joining us tonight.